All right. Welcome, everybody, to the, whatever day this is. The 20th. May 20th, 19... 19... Jeez.
2025?
Tomorrow. I was just...
We're going on vacation tomorrow.
I just said, by this time tomorrow, I may be on a boat drinking. I might even be drinking if I'm not on a boat, but I will be doing something. I'm going to be on vacation, so bear with me. Today is the day it is, May 20th, 2025. And so, welcome, everybody, to the open session, 4:00 PM. Call to order and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Thank you very much for that. Would you please call the roll and with special attention to our remote individual?
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Gobberg is joining us remotely, is that correct? All right. Yes, she is. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's adopt this agenda, please.
I'll move, we adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor. All right. All right. We have... We only have one item.
Mayor, could we do a test here, see if you guys can hear Nicole? Nicole, you want to say something so we see if we can hear you okay?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So, our one agenda item is 4.1. Fiscal year 2025-26. Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program: Budget Review and Discussion. Take it away, staff.
I'll jump in quickly here and then turn it over to Dave. First of all, I want to start out by thanking our staff. We've been through some pretty interesting... I'll call them interesting meetings over the last couple of weeks to try to get to where we think we need to be. For the public's sake, I think I've mentioned to most of the council, we had over $1 million we needed to cut from our teeny-tiny budget that we have, so that was quite a feat. And I want to thank our... all of our staff members, our department heads who worked with us to try to get to where we are today. And we'll go through some things, we... some options and stuff that we can talk about with council and throughout the meeting, but let you know where we are. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave Warren to walk you through this.
Thank you, Cleve. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, the last time we met, we shared our wish list with you. And today, we're going to share how we can afford some of those wish lists or wish items. And what I'd like to do is kind of show you at the 30,000-foot level what the budget looks like, and then we'll drill down and show you how we got there. So with that, we have a presentation for you. So today, we'll talk about the general fund, all of your other operating funds, and how we balance the budget. So, looking at your general fund, just as a refresher, it's your only true source of discretionary revenues. It pays for most city services, including police, street maintenance, and recreation. As Cleve indicated, we began with a status quo budget, and out of the gate, we had a $1,029,000 deficit. And we also had, we presented to you at the last workshop, a $1.1 million in additional requests. So, the budget does include all foreseeable, or what we know about, foreseeable projected economic impacts, meaning inflation, cost of fuel going up, insurance, health insurance, salary adjustments, so on and so forth. So, we are recommending, in order to balance the budget, a $1,124,837 in budget adjustments in total. We'll show you all those adjustments. And if approved, there are some pretty significant cuts that we're recommending. It would actually affect service delivery in certain areas. And each department will have an opportunity to talk about those. I know this is kind of small. The... your revised budget for 2425, the current fiscal year, is $11,302,762. What we're proposing before adjustments is $10,976,889. So, right out of the gate, you're about $325,000 below where we were this current fiscal year. And then, operating expenditures before any reductions, fiscal year 2425, $10,59,845, compared to $11,315,000. Now, you may recall that mid-year, back in December, we did a... we asked that you approve a budget transfer, if you will, from your general fund to the ARPA fund. And that was a move to basically demonstrate that we're spending the rest of the $760,000 in ARPA funds in order to keep them, instead of losing them to the federal government. So that reduced your general fund budget by $760,000. Now, we're having to restore that, plus build in the other costs we just spoke about. So, out of the gate, $11,315,042. And then, net transfers out from $521,000 to $691,000. So, total expenditures, transfers out for fiscal year 25-26, $12,677,74, or a deficit of $1,029,000. And so, what we're recommending in adjustments, and this includes both revenues and expenditures, We are recommending funding the computer replacement program this year for $40,000 and some change. A little bit of equipment, $6,845. And then, conference training and travel, $21,173. So, total adjustments are, in addition to that budget reduction, net, $1,124,837. At that point, you actually have a $94,000 surplus, which is great. But, there is more to the story, and we'll talk more about that. Looking at revenues, you can see on page slide five, sales tax, which currently makes up about 59% of your general fund budget. Out of the gate, in 2425, HDL is forecasting a 3.7% decrease. So that's our base. So we're actually below, starting out. And then, they're estimating a 3.6% increase in 25-26. What that means for your budget is about a $226,000 reduction year-over-year in our budget for just sales tax. So, all other taxes, you can see there, $1,615,000. That's your TOT tax, that's your business license, transfer tax for real estate, all of your franchise fees for garbage, cable, electricity, your cannabis tax. Relatively flat. It's basically a $20,000 or 1.24% decrease. Construction permits. Carl Cahill, when he was here, projected about a $15,000 increase, or 8.33%, which is great. Intergovernmental revenues, which is primarily your property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees, slightly below, about 0.2%. Charges for services, that's anything from parks and rec fees to engineering fees to planning fees. And overall, we're projecting 39%... or, excuse me, $39,000 decrease, or 3.6% decrease. Funds and forfeitures, slightly higher, at $66,351. We're assuming ramping up our vehicle abatement program, and that's one of the adjustments that we're proposing through code enforcement. And then, use of money in property, an increase of $58,185, or 76.7%. Primarily interest. Life is doing better than it was in previous years. Other financing sources, that's just your overhead to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. So, in total, we're actually projecting about $148,751 less than what we started with last year, or 1.32%. Any questions so far? Moving on to expenditures, and this does include the adjustments we spoke about. Police Department, again, we started the year having to restore the $760,000 that we transferred to ARPA in 2425. Plus, we have, for example, if employees eligible for merit increases, we include that. We include if they're in family medical, family benefits, what we project those to be. We did assume a 10% increase in health insurance. We also included a 5% increase in most of your ancillaries, your vision, chiropractic, EAP, life insurance, dental, a 10% increase. We also included the commitments we made to non-sworn employees that you're already in contract with for those. Calpers, we anticipate an 8.4% increase in our pension contributions. That's about $232,000 overall, all funds. $52,000 increase, or 11.9% in workers' comp. And then, a $42,000, 8.21% increase in general liability insurance, as well as a $36,000 increase, or 15% in property insurance. That's estimated. So, you see the differences. There are some variations. For example, in the Development Services Department, we're actually talking about perhaps freezing a position, and I'll let Cleve touch on that. He does a better job with that. But, we'll get into that later. Engineering, actually a $51,000 increase overall. Community services, again, there's some personnel assumptions there that Cleve will touch on later in the presentation. There's a reduction of about $95,000. Plus, there's some programmatic changes that we're recommending, so about a 3.19% decrease. Public Works, about a $21,000 increase. City Council, reduction of $2100, or 1.4. Good job. City Administration, reduced by $31,000. That's primarily, you had a recruitment contract in 2425. That's been removed. There's no election this year. That saves us about 10 grand. And there was some other assumptions there. So, reduction in legal services. So, Finance, slight increase, 5.21%, or 30,000, primarily merit increases and health insurance increases. Non-departmental, we're actually recommending that you use your RMRA, ARPA fund, which we've used... or not ARPA, SB1, excuse me, for a street repair, for day-to-day road maintenance. And we can do that and still meet our local commitment from our general fund. And we'll talk more about that. But that actually reduces your non-departmental expenses by about $159,000, or 12.72%. So in total, the budget is about 4... excuse me, 477,536, or 4.51% higher than the previous year budget. But again, we're not including the $760,000 in ARPA funds, so you have to take that in consideration. Yes?
You mentioned family medical, and it triggered something. I know it depends. The answer will be, it depends. But just say, a generic family of four, an employee, a spouse, and two children. How much is that per... How much do we pay?
The city's portion, on an annual basis, is about $32,000 for a non-sworn employee.
Non-sworn, so if you divide that by 12... Well, but I mean...
Roughly.
So it's 2,500 bucks a month, out of their paycheck?
That's what the s...
What do they pay?
They're paying about 15% of that, of the premium.
The reason I'm asking is, I was in a meeting in Lassen County, and I was... I was doing my thing, but then the sheriff was there, the county sheriff, and he was talking about, you know, their issues, and they have challenges, and blah, blah, blah. And then, he said, "Oh, and like, for the family medical, out of my paycheck is $2,400."
Every paycheck?
Every... No, a month, a month.
A month? That's pretty high.
Yeah. It just... I almost choked. I went, "Okay." And I'm asking, not that you should be happy that you're not paying $2,400 bucks a month, but I'm just curious, because that number seemed crazy to me.
Yeah. As a way of ramping up salaries, some agencies will forego paying, and then they'll ramp up the salaries.
Yeah, I forget. The... The pretzel logic was explained to me, and it made no sense. But, you know, they do a lot of things up there. But I was just doing that for my own edification, so thank you.
Any other questions?
Comments? Okay.
Going to move over to this spreadsheet. See if I can figure... Doesn't want to behave. Sorry about the small print.
We have a small print.
So, this document is your complete operating budget draft. It's two pages, double-sided. It starts out with your general fund to the far left, and you can see the numbers. It breaks it out, kind of like in one of the earlier slides of how we got there. So, I won't go through all of those, but you can see the various adjustments and whatnot. But I just want to show you kind of a snapshot of all the funds you have. Gas tax, again, almost all that revenue is going directly into your general fund for road maintenance, other than, there's, let's see, $3,477 for equipment. Measure L, of course, goes straight into road, water, and sewer projects. That's a balanced budget. Downtown parking, we have a slight deficit, primarily because of the small center street fence replacement. What we could do is liquidate part of the historic City Hall parking lot project to fund that. So, that's something we can talk more about. All the way to Measure J, you're balanced. Community benefit, I know Mr. Morris is going to have a recommendation for uses of those remaining $39,000 in funds. That's a balanced budget. CIP budget's balanced. Orchard Hill, Cottonwood, those are balanced. Rigid Orchard Hill, we actually have a slight surplus of $14,000. Cottonwood CFD, which is one of your newer funds, $54,000 surplus, which goes right into deferred maintenance. Water Enterprise Fund, we actually have about $171,000 deficit. However, that fund is doing fairly well, so we recommend using fund balance to fund that for one time. And of course, we're in a rate study, so we'll offset that through the rates going forward, if you approve that in the future. Sewer Enterprise Fund, similar, $301,000 deficit. Again, the fund's doing decently. I would recommend using fund balance for now, and then, after you adopt new rates, we'll shore that fund up. Measure H, actually a $50,000 surplus because of interest income, estimated. General liability balanced, reserved for economic uncertainties. So your budget in total, before transfers, $25,227,811. You have an $87,000 net out of all funds, a deficit, primarily because of water sewer being in a slight deficit state. So that's your budget overall. Any questions about that?
Where does... We get an embarrassingly small amount of property taxes.
Yes, we do.
Where does that live? Where does that revenue live?
It lives in your general fund, primarily, your ad valorem property tax generates just under $400,000.
Okay, thank you.
So... And we did assume a 2% growth factor, but...
Right, but it's not much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So let's look at the... How did we get here?
Oh, jeez, another one.
So you may recall, we had several positions that we were requesting. Unfortunately, we were not able to recommend those at this time. Let's see here. This is the yellow bar. Again, sorry for the small print, but these are all struck out, so you can see the balance is zero. However, we are recommending that, when we bring back the water sewer cost-of-service study, that we reevaluate...
Let's see. Where's the yellow bars?
It's under Alternative Service Level?
Alternative.
Or ASL?
Red tab. Okay, we're going that direction now. No, that's okay. Just want to find it. Okay.
Okay. So, on page one, about the middle of the page, there's a water reclamation facility chief plant operator. We actually addressed that at one of your, I think, just recently.
There we go. Yeah.
So that's already addressed. But the abolishment, let's see, where it says abolishment, water reclamation facility operator four, and then all the way down to maintenance worker one, actually, all the way down to the bottom. Those positions, we will address through the cost-of-service study. So we'll bring those back for further discussion and recommendations. And if any of the department heads have any comments regarding the deferral of those, or proposed deferral? Want to make a comment? No? Okay.
Well, yeah.
We have to have a comment.
Yeah, we have to talk about this. I mean, you guys do great work, and we know this is a bitter pill, but we need to talk about all this. So, you know, not maybe every grievance, but maybe your top five. Yeah.
I just want to reiterate the importance of these positions at the water reclamation facility, because we are severely understaffed right now. Right now, it's pretty much so bad that the senior operator who... we have two senior operators, and three lower-level operators, and then a contract, part-time CPO. So it's already bare bones, but it's at the point where the senior operator, who's kind of running everything, had just told me today, he can't take a vacation. He can't... He can't take any time off, because he has to run everything. So, I really do hope we can get the water sewer rate study approved in the next few months, and move forward with some of these things, because I'm worried about other employees jumping ship, so.
Yeah, yeah. And that's... Who's doing that? The waters thing?
Staff and Bartle Wells, your consultant, yeah.
And that's a couple of months out still?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Getting close.
Anybody else want to tell us what they need? Anybody else want to... Vent their spleen, as it were? Okay, hold on. All right. We asked. I asked. Do we want to take questions?
It's up to you.
Yeah, okay, Sue, go ahead.
Do you want to give her the microphone?
Yeah, give her the microphone.
I'm really concerned about wiping out all of the water reclamation facility requests here. I mean, that facility is probably the most expensive thing we have for the city of Placerville, both in terms of the equipment there, and in terms of the staffing that we need to do for it. But, if we fall down, and people start saying, "You know, I am not going to work in a place where I don't ever get a promotion, and I don't ever get a vacation, and I quit," then we run the risk of having not meeting the water quality standards, and then you run the risk of having the Water Quality Board come down and say, "Okay, $10,000 a day for every day you don't meet it." Because that's what we've seen before.
Well, yeah.
And that would be a much bitter pill to swallow. So I'm concerned about this. I think this is...
Well, the idea is going to be that we're going to do a rate study. This is what's going to... Well, I shouldn't say what's going to happen. I am one of five people. Here's what's going to happen. We're going to do a rate study, and that rate study is going to tell us that to hire all these people back, we're going to have to raise rates, probably not in a small amount of money.
I think you're right.
And then, we're going to have a meeting up there, and we're going to have a podium down here, and everybody's going to tell us their sad story about how they can't afford our water and sewer rates.
I agree. I think that's...
But yeah, I mean, presumably, this water study, this rate study, will allow us enough money to hire these positions back. Is that the... That's the plan.
Well, I want to emphasize, this is not cutting any current position.
No, no. These are the ones that we can't...
What this is doing is, this is reclassifying some of those positions to have it better organized at the plant. It does, for example, the first one you see on here is the chief plant operator adjusted salary. We already did that.
Right, right, yeah.
You remember, you did that at a previous council meeting. So that's already been done. The abolishment of the water reclamation for operator four, that's a decision we're recommending to eliminate that position, but we're hiring three, what do we call them? Senior operators, I think, is the term we're using now, Melissa, right?
Yeah, it would be hiring one.
It would be... It would be hiring one. Yeah, yeah. So that is a change. That is a change that we're doing, but... So we're not eliminating any positions. These are all new requests above and beyond. And we do fully anticipate, based on what, I believe Measure HL has looked at most of these, and has said, "Yes, we need to do this." So we do anticipate this happening in the very near future. We recognize this needs to get done sooner.
Sooner the study gets done, the better. It'll allow us that leeway. Okay, great.
All right. There's also a handout. It's called Computer Equipment Replacement Budget. I don't recommend we go through the entire document, but I just wanted to show you the summary at 25-26. And I do want to thank Jason Tanger, our IT director, as well as Cleve. This fiscal year was... the dollar amount demonstrated was much higher. Our computers are lasting longer because of solid-state drives and whatnot. They're just higher quality. So, we were able to trim that back, but what we're looking at in aggregate is $45,343. $40,324 of that would be... it's borne by the general fund, so we're recommending funding those through this budget. Okay, looking at other equipment. This is the blue bar, under capital outlay. So, what we're recommending is funding the... see if I can pronounce this right. Spectrometer for the WRF, $15,500. The front mount blower for the Community Services Department. The mobile barricades, the Meridians, $142,000. One of the things that we talked about, and this is one of those discovery processes, we have a little over, roughly $170,000 in PARSAC, which is our old RISJPA. We have what they call flexible spending account funds, and those are funds that came from our net position from that JPA. So we can use those for the Meridians, so we're recommending $100,000 from that funding source, instead of our SB1 funds, and then $42,000 from community benefit. Then we have the plate compactor, RAM compactor, and the sewer nozzle kit. And that is that everything else we're recommending not funding at this time, at least not this year, so. The total is $180,882. $6,845 of that would come from the general fund.
All right.
Any questions? Moving on to CIP. This is the purple bar. So because of the extreme budget constraints in the general fund, we're not recommending funding the range maintenance, male locker room, or carport gutters installation, at this time, anyway. If there's a way to fund it mid-year, we'll bring it back to you. The other items, let's see, annual street striping, which was coming from SB1 and RMRA, and annual thermoplastic crosswalk striping, we're recommending deferring those for now because of the needs of the general fund. So the total there is 4... excuse me, $4,323,720, and you can see the funding sources at the bottom there. Any questions?
You know, as much as I'd like to get rid of that POS fence over at the Center Street Garage, and I would love to do that, there's some things on here that I think we might want to consider. Now, we can't take... The problem is, we can't take the parking funding and do that, huh? Are we getting into a color of money issue here?
Yes, you are, unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
Conference training and travel. So this is the detailed document. This is fairly voluminous. I don't know if you... you can just go through each page, and if there's any questions. Starts out with police. I do want to thank our chief of police. He was able to... the police officer standard and training amounts, he was able to ramp up, so that helps us afford more training. So thank you, Joe, for that. So over to the right, you can see the reimbursements for each training. Those have increased significantly, so. So just for patrol, there's $4,042 in post-reimbursement, so. All right. So you can see, for example... So, you can see, for example, Patrol, the SB SL1 training, that's struck out. And you can see the other items struck out there. We did keep the interview interrogation, two of those, and then basic traffic investigation, two of those. Investigations, we kept. ICA narcotics investigations, crime scene investigations. ICA homicide investigation, okay. Dispatch, RIMS Conference, there's two of those. Dispatch Customer Service Training, two of those. Dispatch School of Violence, two of those. Liability and Records and California Public Records Act Training. Evidence Management as well, so those are kept. Nothing in Administration for Police. Page five, we have Planning. We're recommending not funding the APA California Conference. Building, we're recommending the SVABO Education Institute, but not the Code Enforcement Training at this time. Engineering, the one training there, we're not recommending funding at this time. The water reclamation facility, we didn't touch that because it's Sewer Enterprise funded. So, that $15,000 remains. Most of it's required, thank you, yeah. We don't have a choice. That's the right thing to do.
Thank God for the Sewer Enterprise.
Yes. Community Services, Parks and Facilities, we did keep the Certified Playground Safety Inspector. Very important. However, Recreation, both those trainings, we recommend not funding. Public Works, all but the First Aid and Traffic Flagging Safety. We're recommending everything else. Now, this is your budget, and we don't mean to be disrespectful, but...
Go right ahead.
Based on your comments from the first workshop, we kind of followed your lead and removed those, so. If you want to change that, you're the bosses, so you just tell us what you want to do. City Manager, we're not recommending any funding there. City Clerk, same story. Those are important trainings, but, they're all important, but recommending deferring those for now. Finance, everything but the Art of Budget, we're recommending removing, so. Art of Budget Communication. So, let's see, I'll show you the summary. So, in total, before, post-reimbursement, it's $52,756. We estimate receiving, if we do this, $5,702 in post-reimbursement, which leaves a net of $47,054, $26,000 before post-reimbursement from the general fund. Any questions or department heads, do you have any comments?
They're a quiet crowd.
Let's see here. Now, we get into the adjustments. So, this one's much more detailed.
We're moving forward in the binder, I'm assuming.
It should be under Operating Budget, Draft Operating Budget.
Well, thank you, but I mean, which... Oh, there we go. Okay, 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 great. There we go. All right. I thought it was on here, but...
I apologize, I'm not seeing it here. So, we'll go through the hard copy, which looks like this. And it starts out on page one, so it starts out with General Fund, Revenues. And the first line says Vehicle Abatements. So, the assumption is that we would...
No, it's this one here, it's this one. You've got that up there, but it's this one here. The one with the purple lines, yes.
That's correct.
Great.
So, Police Vehicle Abatements. So, the assumption there is, is to utilize our Code Enforcement Officer, half-time, utilize vehicle abatement activities and recover half of that position cost. Revenues, and Cleve and Dennis can talk more about these. Adult Basketball, we're recommending a reduction in revenue by $5,076. Adult Volleyball, basically not running that program, $3,120. Cornhole Tournaments, not running the program, $1,600. General Aquatics, and I'll let Dennis speak to this, but a reduction of $81,234, reducing that program. Non-departmental, so these are one, kind of one-time, we get them annually, but they vary as far as dollars. But, one of our risk pools called CERA, we anticipate receiving $3,400 for safety grants. NCCSIF, another risk pool, $6,560 for the Police Risk Management Grant. And then Risk Management Reserve, there's $13,048 that we can tap into for training. So, this is how we're really funding our general fund non-post training, is through these grants. NCCSIF Safety Grant, $4,000 there. And then, this one's a little soft. So, it says Police Development Services and Engineering, potential increase in master fees. So, we did a rough analysis, if we were to raise our rates just based on the cost of staff, which that's the nexus, the primary positions for each fee, we anticipate very conservatively at about 75% raising about $168,000. If we do this, I would recommend that we basically identify fund balance for now until those fees are, you know, raised by you, if you choose to do so. But that's just an assumption. So, that raises $171,420 in aggregate. So, then we get into Police Expenditures. The first line item is Personnel, and I'll hand it over to Cleve to kind of talk about some of the areas that we're looking at in Personnel.
I can remember them. So, I want to start with that we, we have some other options that we will talk to you about, but under this scenario that is being proposed to you, it freezes the one vacant police officer position that we currently have. You recall, we froze one last year. This would freeze an additional position under this scenario. Other, other things that we looked at, we looked at the coming year, and I'll say it's probably, our Police Chief plans to retire before too long. We did some analysis based on that and the domino effect that that will have, if you will, between promotions and et cetera throughout our department. And we looked at that and what, what savings we would realize as a part of that. So, maybe somewhat temporary, but those would happen during this fiscal year, based on what we know today. That does also include, currently, we fund two Commander positions, assuming all this went through the way we anticipated, and restaffing. We looked at funding those at a Lieutenant level rather than a Commander level. Basically does the same level of work, similar levels of work, but we would fund them at a Lieutenant level, which is also realizing some savings. So, if you think about it, we, I want to compliment our Chief. I think he's done a great job preparing his, his staff that he currently has in anticipating that all of these would move up. You know, we would have Sergeants move up to the Lieutenant positions, potentially current commanders moving into Chief positions, et cetera, and then Officers moving up into Sergeant position and new Officers. All of those realized savings are mostly realized savings due to starting at a lower step. So, you're realizing savings due to step that they would come into the new positions. So, that's part of what we looked at, the freezing of the position, that transition to a new Chief. And that's primarily it, Dave, is those two for, for the Police Department, right? Okay. And there, there are potentially some other things, and I'm just going to say that because of confidential, confidentiality issues, I can't discuss those in public. But when we go into closed session at the end of the meeting, I will discuss some of those with you in terms of the effects that it has on, on the total budget and gives your, that information to you at that time. Questions on that, I mean, at this time? And just, just so you know, part of what we discuss in the confidentiality part will also affect a second option to what this, and I'll just throw out, that potentially could allow you to unfreeze that position. So...
Is that what I was going to ask?
I'm trying to get, not getting at too much, more than that at this time, if I can, but I just, I'll let you know.
I was going to get at that, so. If we're going to get at that, then I don't need to...
We will, yep. Anything else at this time?
Thank you, Cleve. So, most of these other non-personnel expenditures are pretty self-explanatory. I don't know if the Council has any questions about those or if the Chief has any comments about the impact these will have on his department. But, the total savings, if you will, for the entire Police Department's $277,038. So, that was included in, when I showed you the draft budget, that was included in those numbers. And then, moving on to Development Services, there is one position in that department.
So, this budget does also include freezing the Associate Planner position, and we will talk more about that. We have not included it this time, but we do anticipate that if we freeze that position, we're going to have to have some, probably increase some contract planning services to assist with making sure that work gets done. And there's some other things that we're looking at, working with Carol, she's been great, looking at what we can do to maybe change the way we do things that will save us on some of that workload and some of the things we do. So, we'll get to that as time goes on. But I want to caution that we don't have that money in there at this time, but we do anticipate that we will need to, based on what our final outcome is, and we'll address that in your final budget, using some contract services to supplement the loss of that, of that position in Development Services. Questions on that one? Carol's still smiling, even though we're... We've had some great conversations, she's doing a great job, and I think we have some great ideas of some things we can do in the department to really, really help out and move it forward. But, still, we're going to need some assistance there in some areas that we'll, we'll need to work on, so.
Thank you, Cleve. Moving on to the Engineering Department, there's two line items. One, Engineering Services and Weather and Safety Year. So, that's a total of $20,500 in savings there. And then, going into Community Services, there's a department-wide personnel item, Cleve?
Just want to mention on, on Engineering, too, there are two vacant positions in Engineering currently, and we, we looked at freezing those. However, due to the fact primarily that those are mostly cost recovery because they work on projects, we did not freeze those at this time. But technically, until we can find a way to fill them, you're still realizing the savings from those. But again, those are primarily recovered through projects, any costs that those go into. Not 100%, but probably close to 75 to 80% in that range, right, Melissa? Yeah? So, at this time, we did not freeze those, those two positions, but note that they are currently vacant. We'll also mention for that department, Melissa has found, and we'll be bringing back to you, hopefully at your next meeting, an intern that she wants to hire that is in, going to school in Engineering and is very interested in, in coming in and helping us over the summer. So, it'll be a big help to us just to have that one more body in there that, that can help. And then, again, a lot of that cost will be cost recovery. Because it is an intern, not, it'll be a lower amount of cost recovery, but there will be some cost recovery of that, too. Because we have the vacant positions, we think that money will easily cover the cost of the intern, so. Moving on to Community Services, I'm not going to get into a lot of detail in this one, and, but I will tell you that there's some reorganization that we're looking in our Community Services Department that will realize savings in that department. And I know Matt Lishman's sitting behind me there, so don't panic, Matt, don't panic. But I will note that there is some reorganization that Dennis and I have worked on, and we're, we're excited to be able to bring that forward to hopefully, in some areas, improve, but it will affect some staffing in certain areas, so.
In the, somewhere in the budget in the last half hour, you mentioned that, I thought I heard, that Aquatic Center would have a reduction. And it looked like a fairly decent-sized number. Was that again? 81, thank you, okay.
And Dennis, Dennis can address that. That was in, that was in revenue.
Right.
And then, there's, there should, there's a corresponding reduction in expenditures with that.
Is this along the lines of what we were discussing in previous meetings about maybe not having the pool open in the middle of the week? Okay, great. I don't, yeah. I just wanted, I'm fine, but I just want to make sure that...
But it's basically, when you're talking about the Aquatic Center, and Dennis, you can detail it better.
Right.
We, rather than go through, clear through till Labor Day, we would stop when school starts in early August.
Right, during the week.
So, we're reducing the season, and we're also reducing, we're, we're not doing open swim during the week, only on weekends. Those are the, probably the big ones, am I correct?
And that's along the lines of what we had talked about previously.
I think we lost Nicole. Are you there now, Nicole?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, Dennis, are those the main ones? Anything else you want to address?
Those are the primary ones.
And those, and that's what we had been discussing at the previous meeting, so that's cool. Okay, great. It's not new. It's just a formalizing the old stuff.
Correct, just a reiteration of that and, and, you know, formalizing the numbers a little bit more, so.
I will, I will see this, though, it, it is going to be an impact. It's something that's going to be different. So, we're going to do our best in the field to kind of mitigate some of that and offer... We are doing a movie night, there's some activities that we do have planned. It is not a fun thing, and as a rec programmer, no one wants to cut stuff, right? And so, are we trimming it and are we scaling back? Absolutely, we want to be fiscally responsible. But I do want to put out that the community will definitely feel the impact in regards to the services that we are limiting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis, thank you, Cleve. So, to answer the question regarding aquatics, at the bottom of page three, where it says Public Swim, you can see the part-time personnel, $79,134, yeah, those items there. That's where the reduction is on the expenditure side of the ledger. So, total assumed reduction in Community Service Department expenditures, $188,785. And then, we go into Public Works. Nick's gone through his budget and made recommended adjustments in each division. You can see those there. Those total $22,727. I don't know if you want to make any comments, or, okay, thank you. And then, Administration, actually, it starts out with the City Council, which is...
Zero.
But, $2,000 in contractual services. Shouldn't have as much labor negotiations going on at that time, so. And then, other, Cleve, I don't know if you have any comments about...
Yeah, no, nothing, nothing major there from my perspective. I mean, some of the, like, contract services, I just anticipate due to freezing positions, cutbacks, et cetera. We're not going to be doing a lot of recruiting, and so there's some of those areas that that's related to human resources and et cetera, where, where we can cut back and trim a little bit, so.
Thanks, Cleve. And so, for the Administration Department, it's a total of $36,760 savings there. And then, Finance, we're mostly personnel costs, but there was a few areas that we reduced in overtime and contractual services that we trimmed back. So, there's $3,700 there. And then, Transfers, we talked about the RMRA and SB1, fuel tax, using almost all of that for a general fund. So, that's the $308,773 transfer in to the general fund. In the past, we've... In the past, we've used that for small projects, road projects, but right now, we're, it's kind of a budget balancing move. Measure J, the chief reduced his budget in Measure J, so that reduces the transfer in from the general fund by 3,200. So, non-departmental reduction of 312,023, or actually, transfers in increase, but that reduces the budget by that amount. So, expenditures, a total of 1,021,760, with the revenues that we mentioned, 171,000 in revenues, it nets adjustment of 1,193,180, so. I just want to thank Cleve and the other department heads for really rolling up their sleeves and trying to find a way to balance the budget this year. That's your general fund, then it goes into the smaller funds, gas tax fund, we talked about on page six, the transfer out to the general fund of 308,773.
Fidgeting.
Downtown parking, we're recommending 1,374 reduction there. Measure J, we talked about the transfer outgoing down, or from the general fund, that's really a net zero. Orchard Hill, we had to adjust our site personnel, and then Orchard Hill to balance that budget. Same with the Cottonwood LMD. And the CFD, that was just because of the planned reorganization, that affected that fund by 1,000. And that's all the adjustments that we're recommending, so. Sorry for all the detail, but we wanted to be transparent and show you all, everything we did, so.
I'd like to go back to parking.
Mm-hmm.
And this is really not about the budget, but more of a, do we have any kind of an idea, status of our parking structure? Okay, thank you.
You asking, you going to fold out?
No, that would be not the right ask, question to answer in an open, public meeting, but more along the lines of evaluating the status of our parking structure. I think we should be looking at an assessment district in the parking district on that particular thing, because I've had discussions with people now ad nauseam about parking, about new parking, and I don't think sometimes the people understand the status or the potential of the existing parking structure, and what might or might not need to be done, and I think we definitely need to bring that to bear, and I'd like to do that sooner rather than later, get that out in front of folks. I know that's staff, and I don't, I mean, is this like a complicated thing, or do you just like eyeball it and go, five years?
So, just, just quickly, we have an assessment that has gone on there, we're waiting for costs, right, Melissa, or no?
Not yet. We had a parking structure maintenance, like, study.
Yeah.
Kind of a comprehensive study that looked at what needs to be done.
Right.
There was a lot of work identified, the next step would be a more comprehensive look, where we actually go through detailed analysis of the structural components and put a cost to it.
Cost.
Yeah, but we definitely need to do that.
What would be the level of effort for that?
I don't know, I would have to think about that some more.
Okay.
There, yeah, probably not too extensive.
Yeah, I mean, nobody needs to shovel more work on anybody's plate necessarily, but, like I said, I've had ad nauseam now discussions about parking, and I don't think, I don't think the people that sometimes talk about parking understand the circumstances of the existing parking structure. Parking lots are no dig, they're, I mean, they could fall into Hangtown Creek, it actually happened once, but, you know, they're just paving and striping, and that's fairly mundane stuff, but that structure out there is a whole different animal, and I think we should bring it to light. I have some thoughts about just general governance and budgeting that I'd like to discuss here soon, but I think that's something we need to bring to light, so as long as it's not a Herculean task, I'd like to see that sooner rather than later, my own personal.
Yeah, we can do that.
We can talk about it and see how, how we bring that about, so. Yep.
I have a quick question about the RMRA and SB1 fund, so that, that transfer in, is
that going to affect any ongoing projects for this year? Are we, are we delaying any projects? It's just a-
These were all new projects, and the new projects were really the thermoplastic and the street striping, right, Nick? And we decided, street striping, we did it this year, we think we can go every other year, so we'll skip this year, and I think we'll, we'll be okay there.
Okay.
We went like four years before, I think, right, Nick? Five? And it was, it was a little rough there.
And I, I'm preaching to the choir. We have to be really careful on this.
Yep.
Because, you know, you go every other year, okay, we probably make striping last every other year, you know, but then you start getting out there, and this gets to being like, when I say honest with the public, it's not like we're dishonest with the public, but truly being honest with the public, and this rate study's going to be just a little bit of that reality, when we start talking about the costs and what needs to happen, that, well, it's going to be real eye-opener. I was around for the, last time we did it. Yeah, 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 and, and it was not fun. Okay, all right, thank you.
The 20, the 2010 one was the really rough one.
Well, the 2010 one was, well, that's when they did the whole thing, but I remember when I was on the council, because we could not finance our, we couldn't refinance the bond, because we were not making enough revenue, because our rates sucked.
Yep.
And we actually had to go through all of that, and that's when we got rid of the 15 bucks of, I forget, the discount, all that, because we had to finally just start making enough money to pay our bills.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. That's it?
That's all we have at this point.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't know any more public-
Any public comment? Anybody from the public want to comment on this mess?
I'm talking to Dennis. I'm talking to my mom.
Okay.
So, at this point, that's what we have, any comments you have about any of this changes you want to make, but I did mention, there's some things that we need to talk to you about in closed session, and so, if you want to do that first and then come back, we can do that, so.
Okay. July 1st.
Has to be adopted by July 1.
Yeah.
Right now, what we're looking at, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, we would hold public hearing on the first meeting in June.
That's right.
And adopt at the second meeting in June. Yeah.
You guys can take over the planet, there's only going to be three up there. Mountain insurrection, I'd be happy for it, actually. Okay, so, so we could have more budget discussions after the closed session?
We can.
Okay, let's, let's go get smarter.
So, you need to-
Yes, let's take five minutes, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, formally announce the closed session, if you would, so that, and see if there's any public comment, this is the city attorney's-
If we're formally going to go to closed session, would there like to be any public comment on us doing that? Okay, great, we're going to go to closed-
And the closed session is on labor negotiations.
Labor negotiations, but it informs all sorts of thought processes.
Then we're going to stop for open session?
Yes, we are.
We will come back to open session.
We're going to come back to open session.
Yes.
So, I don't know, it's labor negotiations, it doesn't take long.
I, I don't think it will take long, I would anticipate 15 to 20 minutes.
But.
But.
We're going to talk about your department. Yeah, we're talking about stop, you might even be interested in. Yeah, yeah, five, yeah, we, everybody gets five minutes to go whatever. The fact that there's no food here is a little bit-
I wish I was a 50-year-old drinker, actually. That would be nice. All right. So, that's it. Okay, no, we have to wait. Beach Girl. What was that? That was some one-hit wonder. God, what was the name of that group? They were terrible. But they had that one, they had that one hit back in the eighties.
The Beatles?
No. Yeah, maybe the seventies. No, it wasn't AC/DC. Now, Beach Baby.
They had more than one hit.
Yeah, they had several hits. Beach Baby. Oh, God. I don't have my phone with me. I can't look it up. It's okay. It's not important. Wham. They had more than one hit, too. Oh, wait a second. Wham wasn't... I mean, they were bubble gum, but you know.
Hey, what do you do? I'm a Marine Corps. We listen to Wham, baby.
Wake me up before you go-go. God, I really hope they weren't listening to Wham. Yeah, that's...
All right. Mayor, we're on.
Welcome to the jungle. All right, is Nicole back on? Enough with this frivolity. We have serious work to do. Would you like to report out?
Would you like to report out on our close session?
Yes, just briefly, we went in a closed session on PPOA negotiations and council provided direction to staff.
Thank you very much. Okay. We all want to go home. I want to go on vacation. But we do need to chat a little bit about some things. We did have some, we discussed a few things in there which we cannot discuss in their entirety out here. But I would like to say, we have looked through some numbers and this is the beginning of a process for everybody involved. But I would like to report out that we will not be freezing the one police officer position. And we're going to figure out a way to fund that. But this applies to everybody in this room. We're looking at everything. We, you know, I've been talking about this, you know, I was thinking about... Somebody approached me the other day and said that everybody in Plasterville wants thing, something. I won't even get into what it was. And I was looking at him going, "Nobody knows what everybody in Plasterville wants." I mean, most of the people in this town know. And I'm pretty sure they didn't what this guy wanted, but that's not the point. The point is, is that we deliver a lot of really good services out of the city of Plasterville. And I'm very proud of this organization. We have some economic situations going on and we're all aware of that. And everybody can say, "Well, we need to rethink how we deliver these services." But we do. We do need to rethink how we deliver these services. And that doesn't mean working everybody to the bone. The vast majority of people that live in this town never set foot in City Hall. They rarely interact with any of the government services we provide. They bask in the glow and the knowledge that they live in an incredibly safe and well-run community. But the fact of the matter is, they probably never call the police. They never have a fire truck come to their house. They, none of those things happen. And thank God, they don't. If they have a problem with a pothole or something, the public works folks fix it. When there's a project, the engineering people deal with it. When there's housing and stuff, the planning folks deal with it. I think that we need to start thinking about, and this is not going to come as a great revelation to anybody, how we deliver those services. I don't want to run staff ragged. Nobody does. But when we're freezing positions and doing all that, the answer can't be, "And we're going to keep doing everything the same way we did it the day before." We're going to have to figure this out. Because my goal is to still have a very safe, productive city and not making our employees wish they worked somewhere else. Well, maybe some of them, but not all of them. Most of them we want to keep. So, anyway, so that's kind of my message. My fellows up here can say whatever they'd like. We have a lot of work to do here. I'm in favor of doing a little bit of spending here that we might not normally in order to make some positions whole, in order to buy some training. We still need to talk about that. The budget's the budget and that's kind of where we're working from right now. So, I don't want to imply that we'll be departing too seriously from the document we just looked at. But I am willing to entertain some different kind of thinking on this and investing in the people that make the city the best in the world. So, anyway, that's my spiel. Does anybody wish to add? Say I'm an idiot? Ryan, come on, tell me. I'm not. Thank you for not telling me that. Anyway, all right. Does the public, are we, are we done?
That's all. Yes. That's all I have unless we've come out of closed session. There's any comments from the public?
Is there any comments on our closed session that we're going to go talk to the union that runs the police officers? Go ahead.
Okay, I agree with, with our mayor. I think that we have a great city. And I do come to all the city council meetings, so I know. And all of the city personnel that I have ever met have been top-notch. And I know that if you don't treat people right, they will leave. So, we need to make sure that we have got promotion potential and the ability to, to grow in their jobs. Because I know the happiest I ever was, was working for the Forest Service. And the reason was it allowed me to grow into the position and it allowed me to take...